Tom, you sent the agenda in.
Yes, sir.
Yes, five.
You can sit right here.
Oh, right.
Don't do it again, I'll be back here.
Thank you. Bob Dragon, how are you?
This is some additional stuff that came in today.
That's kind of useless, huh?
You think?
Oh, we'll call her back after. We make them come back. It's up to you.
You might want to consider swapping these. This is just a conceptual, so it's only 10 minutes or so. Just a vote to change the order.
Okay, conceptual?
Yeah.
Time is 6:33. I call the planning meeting to order. We'll call members we have. Bob Dragon, Pat Roach, Rhonda Bishop, who's the vice chair, Paul Wilson, Dick Lewis, and John Kelly. And Bob Dragon's a voting member tonight to make up 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. So he's a voting member tonight.
Do you want to list those two?
Oh, John Ranlet is excused today. And when we get to the site plan review for the GCEDC Business Incubator, Ray Gosney will excuse, excuse himself because he is on the board. So, that brings us to general public comments. These are three comments from the public, something that is not on the agenda for tonight. Seeing none, I would like to make one mention. We have a student from the 2th Regional High School here. His name is Michael Shaw. If he wanted to stand up, we could at least recognize him at the meeting today, that his teacher will know he made it. Thank you. Are there other students that are here for class? Want to stand up? What's your name?
Amkar.
Amkar? Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead, stand. You can all stand up. Great. Nice to see you.
I'm committed to my class.
With Mr. LeBlanc?
On the hotel.
Okay. Great. Well, it's good to have the youth here and see how the process works, so, good. Someday you guys will be sitting here.
Or not.
That brings us to item number four, and we have two items on the agenda, and what we will probably do is switch the order. So 4B, which is a conceptual plan, and that is Fairgrounds Road presented by Agent Tom Han of Forco. Would you like a big plan up, or?
Sure. Please.
I did bring, assuming Sharon probably gave you.
Yep, they have.
And this is just slightly revised a couple little revisions to it if you'd like. David. So, Tom Han with Forco, representing three couples that own this property jointly, Fred and Kathy Kelsey, Bill and Elizabeth Batcholder, Dennis Gerard, and Forrest Le Duke. This is Tax Map 207 Lot 1. On the fig plan up here, it's 249 acres total. It's two pieces of frontage on Fairgrounds Road. It surrounds Tax Map 207 Lot 2 on two different sides. Perimeter survey was done in 1981 by John French. A five-acre lot was subdivided from it in 1985, which was revised in 1988, and there's been no changes to it since that time. The proposal will be to subdivide a 50-acre lot with two pieces of frontage on Fairgrounds Road. The left and rest of 207-2 will be 200 feet. The remaining parcel will be 199 acres with about 210 feet of frontage on Fairgrounds Road. Can you see that okay, back there? There's currently two existing driveways serving the lot that you may have in the -- do you have maps?
Yes.
Okay. There is an existing, essentially a logging road, which is also a snowmobile trail, sort of the property now. There's another road, a driveway. It's grown in at this point, but it is, it was broke up and created, I'm assuming, back in the 1970s or 80s. Not currently being used, but it is in existence on the other piece of road frontage to the east of 207-2. The proposal is a result of a settlement agreement as a result of mediation that went through the Grafton County Probate Court, and so the proposal is basically what was agreed to in that settlement agreement, and this is the implementation of that settlement agreement. I don't have it on this map, but on the map that you have, there is a wetland in the vicinity of the lot line, new lot line would be, as well as the new driveway that would be serving the back 199 acres. No wetland determination has been done yet, but that should be occurring in the very near future. What we are suggesting, I guess, and what we're looking for is some background as to how much wetland delineation needs to be done for both the lot creation and the driveway situation. And one of our thoughts was perhaps, we know that there are some wetlands behind to the north of 207 Lot 2, but there's no driveway or development being proposed as part of this. So the one wetland area that is possibly going to have some impact will be in the, to the west of 207-2, in the strip of land where the frontage of the 199-acre lot would come onto Fairgrounds Road. And besides the wetland delineation, I guess the other questions that I would have would be, well, this is a large lot subdivision. The perimeter has already been surveyed. I guess my question would be, what would you like to see on the final plan? Do you want to see the entire perimeter, or more just the detail of the 50-acre lot that is being created with the frontage on Fairgrounds Road? And a similar question in terms of topography. Again, large lot subdivision, the soils, the soil types are conducive to septic systems, and therefore, how much topographic information would you like to see on the final plan? Or perhaps would the inclusion of USGS topo map with the application suffice? So that's about what I have. Sharon, do you have any comments?
Well, Tom spoke with Brian Murphy, our zoning officer, and myself preliminarily before, and because this is what it is at this point, it's a subdivision technically, but it's not, you know, the subdivided parcel is extremely large, we felt as long as what has been referred to by Tom in terms of wetland delineation to the rest and that sort of thing were done, that it would suffice. Later on down the line, if the folks owning this 50-acre parcel want to do, to do further subdivision, that's a different ball of wax, but because the scale is so large on this proposed subdivision, and it is being implemented as mediation for a court case, so, you know, it just, it has to be done just to separate the parcels out, one from another, or the ownership out one from the other two, we didn't see any huge deals at this point. I mean personally, and this is just a conceptual, so we can't get too deeply into it, but my feeling would be that if we had copies of the previously recorded subdivision plans from Mr. French, his work is usually quite comprehensive, so that would give us the larger thing rather than you having to do 16 different scales because it is such a large parcel. As long as, you know, the information was transmitted to the board, when you did come before the board, that would suffice, in my opinion. I'm not sure what they're going to ask for, but it's a bit, it's a little different proposal. I mean, it's not further subdivision within that parcel, or a million different parcels within the parent parcel for residential development at this point.
Yeah. What I could foresee doing would be to, on the location map on the final plan, show the entire thing, and then, of course, we'll have to show total acreage before and acreage of the two lots post-subdivision, and then, of course, with a reference to the prior perimeter and subdivision plan, so, which has been recorded at the registry, so we'll refer to that. Recording plan number as well.
I mean, it's a minor subdivision, but the scale is large.
Yes.
Essentially, is what it is.
Yeah. Just my thought would be that we can show more detail of primarily the 50-acre lot as well as the area where there are some wetland issues without having to deal with the, you know, kind of the back 100 acres, which has already been surveyed. Any questions from the board at this point?
I guess my echoing what Sharon said, I'd like to try to make it as simple as possible. I mean, there's no house development proposed at this point in time, so whenever you come for a house on the 50 acres, it is one house, and you'll have to do a second plan, or the soil analysis at that point in time, citizens getting into that, you know, when that could be months or years off in the future, so.
You know, the zoning is on that, what the zoning is at that particular point.
I'm sure it's agriculture. Yes, Ms. Bishop?
You propose a driveway, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that that long line here? The number three?
Yes. If you can see it, it's a K3. The, that. Yeah.
And that's going to continue out way back here?
Yes, and it's probably not clear on that, but this is existing, this is existing all the way through now.
Okay. So what you're going to do is here?
Yes, to accommodate the 199 acres, that this would be a new driveway up to that point and then joining on to the existing. And then in terms of serving the 50-acre lot, there's this one already existing, as well as, again, this was grown in, but it's, it's there.
Right. Where is this associated, where is Lunlake Road from there? I tried to figure it out from here.
So this Chason Road is probably about here, and Lunlake Road will take off there.
So you get another 2, 500 feet, or?
I'm going to see it here.
I tried to figure it out, but I couldn't.
It's down here.
Couldn't see it.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Wilson?
Just for the sake of the folks who are sitting on this side, about the discussion of driveways, are you saying that the K3 driveway is not an existing logging road, but is a proposed driveway?
Yes.
Okay, that's the westernmost.
Yes, this is existing here, all the way through.
Okay.
And so what would be new is this, it's right here.
Okay. And is it to be understood that there's going to be better wetlands delineation then? There is?
Yeah, yeah, as it applies to this subdivision. They just didn't want to have to do the whole thing that was outside the subdivision, the proposed boundaries.
Yes, what we're suggesting is wetlands delineation from, this is 207-2, basically from that K1 road, including the K1 driveway, from there over to the boundary. So where the new driveway location is proposed. We'll set up maybe possibly a couple stations from the old information you have from 1981, show the wetlands, show where the driveway's going to go, and the boundary line, in that vicinity. Probably not have to go to a second station to do that, is what you're thinking then? I mean, we'll do whatever surveying work is needed. Definitely don't see a need that you have to do any more topo than just delineating the wet area. Are you then going to blaze the line after, or? Yes. Okay. Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, we'll do the, we're setting corners and establishing, brushing, blazing, painting the new subdivision line. Mr. Kelly?
Is there gravel pit out back there somewhere with a house in it?
No, no, there's just a couple log landings, so, you know, that existing road has been used for a long.
There's a house out in there somewhere around Backers, that somebody built about, you know, six, seven years ago.
And that's, you know, quite a ways, that's actually to the east of Batcholder's house, yes. If there's no more questions, you think you've got enough information from us to come back? I believe so. That brings us to a site plan review for 149 Main Street. The, well, I don't think I got to get the initials, but the GCEDC for a business incubator on PID 109-021. Sharon, do you want to say anything?
I'll start out, sure. Yeah, you've got to say it enough times so it just rolls off your tongue. C2BG. These folks, Mark Scorano, who's the executive director of Grafton County Economic Development Council, has come before the board earlier this year, I believe, or late last year, I think it was earlier this year, for a conceptual. This project entails a, basically, it's more than a rebuild, it's a tear-down, a rebuild of the old Richelson, the former Richelson's property at 149 Main Street, which is the gateway to Plymouth. This is proposed to be a three-story plus a partial basement office building with 3,543 square foot footprint. The footprint is proposed to be smaller than what's existing there. The building will be shifting from the existing building. It's three stories, that'll provide a little over 10,000 square feet of gross interior space, and it is destined to become a business incubator, which will be divided also into some individual offices for lease by startup and new businesses, and the folks propose a pretty solid association with the business department at PSU. It's a very challenging site. The principals have met with Brian and myself and some of the department heads just to begin to see what some of the challenges might be in terms of developing that site, because it is right there, there's absolutely no wiggle room. And I also understand that the principals have acquired that little triangle of sidewalk and green space right there that DOT also owned. Oh, I forgot to say, DOT had bought this for when they were redoing the bridge and the, putting the new roundabout in, and these folks have subsequently purchased that from Department of Transportation. We just got some schematics in today. Also, I hope you've had a chance to look at, our town engineer, Mike Bignalli, did give a very preliminary overview of his assessment of some of the drainage. That area is problematic for drainage, but the drainage is pre-existing to this product and is not really the problem of the applicant. It's something that is in process, needs to be addressed, and I think they will speak to that, because I know I've been in touch with the district engineer, Mark Moro, and he was going to come up with some ideas. So, they'll give you more of the details. In terms of procedure and protocol, there is a request for waivers letter in your application package, so that can either be looked at on its own merit, or simultaneously when you go through the checklist to accept the application. Oh, oh, and one more thing, I'm sorry. At the outset, because this is a, it's an unusual project, it's very creative, but it's kind of a hybrid entity, spiriting it, so at first glance, we thought we were dealing with a quasi-governmental agency, Grafton County, the different fundings, this and that. We did find out subsequently that we are not, so we are having full site plan review on this, and an approval needs to be achieved. And you will hear the folks speak to the fact that because it is a rebuild, different footprint from the existing building, there are some minor technical zoning issues, setbacks, there's no setbacks, everybody's right up to the curb anyway, and architectural design, potential variance needed for the height, but that'll get addressed during the discussion. So I have.
All right. Is there someone that would like to give us an overview of this?
Good evening, folks. My name is Mark Scorano, I'm chief executive officer for Grafton County Economic Development Council. We are a, as our name indicates, an economic development organization. This is our second appearance before you. You may recall, I think it was earlier this year, or late last year, one or the other.
October, November last year.
Was it? Okay.
I don't know.
To go over our plans, some of the initial ideas of business incubation, what we'll want to do with that property at 149 Main Street, and give you an idea that we'd be coming before you at some point for conditional approval for site work associated with that, with that location. Before I start, I'd like to point out some of the folks involved with the decision-making process at the Grafton County Economic Development Council, and today we have Board Chair Bill Webb in attendance, Ray Gosney, who is a director on the GCEDC board and has been for as long as I've been here and even before, Mike Alberts, and Jonathan Gould are both directors. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to also point out our development team that we're pretty proud of, that have performed admirably. Our contract for design-build is with Cobb Hill Construction. You may be familiar with Cobb Hill from some of their work in Concord, particularly Capital Commons, which is like 149 Main Street on a pretty tight area. It is indeed one of the reasons why we chose them as a contractor for this, realizing the tight location of that. And Jerry Kingwell, president, and Claude Dupuy are here representing that operation. Under them is Alba Architects with Phil Bennett and Stuart Anderson, who will be leading the discussion on the actual building itself. And we also have Jay Poole and with HEB Engineers here today. Thanks for coming over from Conway, Jay, appreciate that. The, before we start, I just want to give an idea of where we've been with this project. This has been a long time coming. In 2004, a local group of concerned citizens from the hospital, from the New Hampshire Electric Co-op, from GCEDC, from Plymouth State University convened and realized that this area needed specialized assistance for those starting new industries. The GCEDC does not do a lot of business attraction efforts, we do not have the budget for that, but we're believers of growing from within, helping out people that have an idea and helping them grow to a point where they have hired people and they become good employers for our region. We've done this already with our business incubator in cooperation with Dartmouth College over in Lebanon. You'll be pleased to note that that operation has assisted businesses that have collectively created over 200 jobs for that region itself. What we're looking to do is a similar arrangement here with Plymouth State University based on the positive feasibility study that was done in 2004. The feasibility study was followed up by a business plan for this operation that was created by PSU graduate student that won second place in the National Small Business Institute Business Plan Contest. So, and I think that'll give you an idea of why we have decided to partner with Centers of Higher Education, Dartmouth College in the western part of Grafton County, and now here, Plymouth State University in the eastern part of Grafton County. There are two parts to this project. We are here asking, obviously, for conditional approval for the real estate portion of this project. We'll be leasing out space to entrepreneurial firms as they grow. Once they become financially viable, they will vacate the space, making space room for another company. But the most, arguably the most important part of any qualified business incubation program is the intellectual capital that you can bring to assist these companies as they start and grow. And that's why I'm really pleased to be partnered with Plymouth State University. You know, the folks there are probably a little tired of me describing this university and the changes that they have undergone in just the six years that I have been with GCEDC. This isn't your father's Plymouth State College any longer. This is a dynamic institution, one that I'm proud of my organization being associated with. Their College of Business Administration is top-notch, has been getting excellent reviews from folks, and I think it's something that we in central New Hampshire can be very proud of. As such, I'm pleased to introduce to you for maybe a comment or two, Provost Julie Bernier and Business Professor Terry Doutier.
Good evening, I'm Julie Bernier. I'm pleased to be here this evening to speak on behalf of Plymouth State University in support of this project. We are very excited about this project. We see it as a win-win-win for the town of Plymouth, for the county, and for our students and faculty. You'll notice that the name of the project is Enterprise Center. It's not called an incubator, though it will incubate new businesses. We've chosen that name because we want this partnership to be both an incubator and a business accelerator to assist existing businesses. We are particularly excited about the opportunities that this will provide for our students. It will serve as a living learning laboratory for our students in the College of Business Administration, sales leadership, marketing, but also in our other disciplines like graphic design, computer science, and technology. I have Professor Terry Doutier from --
More than what's existing there, the building will be shifting from the existing building. It's three stories that'll provide a little over 10,000 square feet of gross interior space. And it is destined to become a business incubator, which will be divided also into some individual offices for lease by startup and new businesses. And the folks propose a pretty solid association with the business department at PSU. It's a very challenging site. The principals have met with Brian and myself and some of the department heads just to begin to see what some of the challenges might be in terms of developing that site, because it is right there, there's absolutely no wiggle room. And I also understand that the principals have acquired that little triangle of sidewalk and green space right there that DOT also owned. Oh, I forgot to say, DOT had bought this for when they were redoing the bridge and the, putting the new roundabout in. And these folks have subsequently purchased that from Department of Transportation. We've just got some schematics in today. Also, I hope you've had a chance to look at our town engineer, Mike Bignelli, did give a very preliminary overview of his assessment of some of the drainage. That area is problematic for drainage, but the drainage is pre-existing to this project and is not really the problem of the applicant. It's something that is in process, needs to be addressed, and I think they will speak to that, because I know I've been in touch with the district engineer, Mark Moro, he was going to come up with some ideas. So they'll give you more of the details. In terms of procedure and protocol, there is a request for waivers letter in your application package. So that can either be looked at on its own merit or simultaneously when you go through the checklist to accept the application. Oh, and one more thing, I'm sorry. At the outset, because this is a, it's an unusual project, it's very creative, but kind of a hybrid entity, spiriting it. So at first glance, we thought we were dealing with a quasi-governmental agency, Grafton County, the different fundings, this and that. We did find out subsequently that we are not. So we are having full site plan review on this, and an approval needs to be achieved. And you will hear the folks speak to the fact that because it is a rebuild, different footprint from the existing building, there are some minor technical zoning issues, setbacks, there's no setbacks, everybody's right up to the curb anyway, and architectural design, potential variance needed for the height, but that'll get addressed during the discussion. So I have-
All right. Is there someone that would like to give us an overview of this?
My name is Mark Scorano, I'm chief executive officer for Grafton County Economic Development Council. We are a, as our name indicates, an economic development organization. This is our second appearance before you. You may recall, I think it was earlier this year, or late last year, one or the other.
October, November last year.
Was it? Okay.
I don't know.
To go over our plans, some of the initial ideas of business incubation, what we'll want to do with that property at 149 Main Street, and give you an idea that we'd be coming before you at some point for conditional approval for site work associated with that, with that location. Before I start, I'd like to point out some of the folks involved with the decision-making process at the Grafton County Economic Development Council. And today we have Board Chair Bill Webb in attendance, Ray Gosny, who is a director on the GCEDC board and has been for as long as I've been here and even before, Mike Alberts, and Jonathan Gould are both directors. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to also point out our development team that we're pretty proud of, that have performed admirably. Our contract for design-build is with Cobb Hill Construction. You may be familiar with Cobb Hill from some of their work in Concord, particularly Capital Commons, which is like 149 Main Street on a pretty tight area. It is indeed one of the reasons why we chose them as a contractor for this, realizing the tight location of that. And Jerry Kingwell, president, and Claude Dupuy are here representing that operation. Under them is Alba Architects with Phil Bennett and Stuart Anderson, who will be leading the discussion on the actual building itself. And we also have Jay Poole and with HEB Engineers here today. Thanks for coming over from Conway, Jay, appreciate that. The, before we start, I just want to give an idea of where we've been with this project. This has been a long time coming. In 2004, a local group of concerned citizens from the hospital, from the New Hampshire Electric Co-op, from GCEDC, from Plymouth State University convened and realized that this area needed specialized assistance for those starting new industries. The GCEDC does not do a lot of business attraction efforts, we do not have the budget for that, but we're believers of growing from within, helping out people that have an idea and helping them grow to a point where they have hired people and they become good employers for our region. We've done this already with our business incubator in cooperation with Dartmouth College over in Lebanon. You'll be pleased to note that that operation has assisted businesses that have collectively created over 200 jobs for that region itself. What we're looking to do is a similar arrangement here with Plymouth State University, based on the positive feasibility study that was done in 2004. The feasibility study was followed up by a business plan for this operation that was created by PSU graduate student that won second place in the National Small Business Institute Business Plan Contest. So, and I think that'll give you an idea of why we have decided to partner with Centers of Higher Education, Dartmouth College in the western part of Grafton County, and now here Plymouth State University in the eastern part of Grafton County. There are two parts to this project. We are here asking, obviously, for conditional approval for the real estate portion of this project. We'll be leasing out space to entrepreneurial firms as they grow. Once they become financially viable, they will vacate the space, making space room for another company. But the most, arguably the most important part of any qualified business incubation program is the intellectual capital that you can bring to assist these companies as they start and grow. And that's why I'm really pleased to be partnered with Plymouth State University. You know, the folks there are probably a little tired of me describing this university and the changes that they have undergone in just the six years that I have been with GCEDC. This is, isn't your father's Plymouth State College any longer. This is a dynamic institution, one that I'm proud of my organization being associated with. Their College of Business Administration is top-notch, has been getting excellent reviews from folks, and I think it's something that we in central New Hampshire can be very proud of. As such, I'm pleased to introduce to you for maybe a comment or two Provost Julie Bernier and Business Professor Terry Doutier.
Good evening, I'm Julie Bernier. I'm pleased to be here this evening to speak on behalf of Plymouth State University in support of this project. We are very excited about this project. We see it as a win-win-win for the town of Plymouth, for the county, and for our students and faculty. You'll notice that the name of the project is Enterprise Center. It's not called an incubator, though it will incubate new businesses. We've chosen that name because we want this partnership to be both an incubator and a business accelerator to assist existing businesses. We are particularly excited about the opportunities that this will provide for our students. It will serve as a living learning laboratory for our students in the College of Business Administration, sales leadership, marketing, but also in our other disciplines like graphic design, computer science, and technology. I have Professor Terry Doutier from the College of Business Administration. She can speak just briefly a little bit about the kinds of programs that we intend to be offering through this partnership.
Thank you all. So I think that, just to reinforce this idea that programs will occur both here in Plymouth at the incubator, as well as then beyond. Within the facility itself, we expect to have Mac Labs and a green screen room that's going to allow local businesses to be able to come in and potentially produce videos that they could put on their website to help enhance their web presence to clients. We intend to build a focus group room, so in the evening, a local business could bring potential customers in and conduct a focus group in a formal focus group environment that's professional. In addition, faculty like myself and many of my colleagues in the other departments that Julie referred to are excited about the possibility of expanding our services beyond Grafton County, finding ways to reach out to the businesses that may not need to relocate, loggers, folks that are running service-based businesses out of their home, innkeepers, hotel keepers, who could benefit from business support, business acceleration, and coaching services. So we expect to build a model where this may be a hub that we're fanning out from and helping to deliver services beyond just this space, but then also have a place where people could come in for value-added services within this space and for those businesses who could benefit from low-cost rental to start to build their operation. They've got a place to come together in community with each other and grow their operation. So that's just some more of the specifics. Thank you.
As you can see, this is the reason why we partnered with Plymouth State University. The level of intellectual capital and resources are something that we would never be able to provide on our own. I'll just add two other important statistics. According to National Business Incubation Association, 87% of businesses that go forward and are assisted by a qualified business incubation program are still in business. When you compare that to the Small Business Administration's statistics and the failure rate of 50% of businesses that start up over five years, it's a pretty good economic development strategy for us to follow. In addition, you folks in particular will be pleased to know that 84% of businesses that graduate from and leave a business incubator facility generally stay in the same area. So this is truly an economic development project that will directly and indirectly benefit not only job creation within the town of Plymouth, but also tax revenues, which I know that we're always mindful of. One of the things that we did when we talked about where would we like to locate an incubator was it needed to be in close proximity to the brains. Again, one of the most important parts of this project. And there's no place basically closer than 149 Main Street, a currently vacant, somewhat blighted building, the first thing you see coming into town. One of the things in economic development that, one of the theories is something called the broken teeth syndrome. And you see it a lot in communities that are, that are down on their luck. And you've seen it in some communities where buildings that remain vacant over a period of time, perhaps the landlord is vacant, him or herself, they're generally torn down. And what that creates is a, the broken tooth syndrome, just like when you look at somebody and they smile, you notice a broken tooth. It's the same with empty lots in any downtown area. What we're doing here is taking a building that might otherwise be underutilized and putting up a new structure that we think is respectful to the community's architectural standards, as well as putting the town's best foot forward for those visitors coming in and looking at Plymouth as perhaps a place they'd like to live, or a place they'd like to invest. As such, I'd like to start the introduction and the presentation on the building itself by calling up the folks from Alba Architects.
Thank you, Mark. My name is Stuart Anderson, I'm with Alba Architects, head of the design team for the Plymouth Enterprise Center. We are here this evening for, to present for your consideration and approval, the redevelopment of 149 Main Street as Mark discussed. For just one piece of the visuals, which are also in your packets of information there. This is the existing site, as Sharon mentioned, there is two parts of the land that are calculated in the process of going through that lot merger application, which Sharon, what have the paperwork on, in this lot here, which the building largely takes up, approximately 94% impervious cover right now, and we can go to the family of this land right here too. It is a single-story structure with full basement as they stand. Our plan is to deconstruct the existing structure down to the foundation and reuse part of that foundation as our new footprint. As you can be seen here, this has now become the larger lot, and our building sits largely, mostly on the original lot with just a slight encroachment onto here. It will be a three-story structure with partial basement, as mentioned earlier. We have made application to the zoning board of adjustment for both a variance on the height restriction. We have also, that has also previously been run by the fire chief and has tentatively voiced approval for that, but obviously the zoning board will make determination. As well as the sightlines, or, beg your pardon, the setbacks will require special exception. In the Village Center, it is a 15-foot setback with a zero setback by special exception. So actually, we will maintain the frontage that is on 149 Main Street right now. We'll actually be a little further back, we'll be making the whole building considerably more conforming than it is right now. You'll actually notice in this red line, you can see within your packets too, part of the existing structure actually bridges the plotline right now and goes into the right way for the railroad. Our proposal is to remove that section of building and actually make it considerably more conforming. The new footprint, as mentioned earlier, is about 3,500 square feet, and the whole project will result in about a 10 to 15% net reduction in impervious surface area on this site. As I mentioned, application has been made to the ZBA for both special exception and variance, and we have reviewed the building with both Sharon and Brian Murphy at the town, as well as various other town departments, to try and keep everyone as closely involved in the loop as possible and make sure there are no surprises as we go through this. You can see in your packets there a general rendering of the exterior of the building. There's also the smaller larger one here. Our focus really was this, as Mark had commented on, this is a large gateway site into the center of town, and to that, we tried to address that architecturally and complement the existing architecture, but also at the same time enhance what we feel is that gateway to the town. I will actually defer to Jay Poole in just one moment to discuss the civil details in a little more detail with you, but would just finally add that the project has received approval from the State Department of Environmental Services for a shoreline permit, so that is already in hand and we're ready to proceed on that basis. So Jay, I will let you comment on the civil aspects.
Just, just to add a bit more detail on the site, as was mentioned, this lot merger here allows us to incorporate some more improvements on that lot, but we're really limited by the site itself as far as site development. As was mentioned, the footprint is slightly smaller, the impervious area is slightly Some of the things that we will have to address is water service to the building. This building will be sprinkled, and so we'll need to put new water service into the building. We also talked with the Village Water and Sewer District Superintendent regarding sewer, and there's the possibility that we might have to upgrade the sewer service to the facility as well, to bring it up to current size requirements. So new water, new sewer. There's an existing drive between the buildings which will be maintained. There will be a retaining wall installed here to provide accurate access to this stairwell. The main access to the building will be on the, on the south side of the building, near the corner here. One thing that Stuart mentioned was sightlines. One of the things that DOT was interested in is maintaining that sightline. So this dash line that you see was the sightline of the existing building, and we maintain that in the new structure. And drainage, you know, drainage for this site here, we have the ability to deal with it onsite for this particular project, but we do understand that there is an issue off-site, that there have been conversations with DOT and to work with them, not as part of this project, but maybe in conjunction with this project, looking at making a improvement to the off-site drainage.
Jay, if I can, folks, we do have, thanks to Councilor Ray Burton, DOT Commissioner Chris Clement will be here in early November to look at the problem area of water coming down High Street and coming into these properties. So we hope to be working with DOT to help address that, not only for ourselves, but also for our neighbors at the furniture store.
So we mentioned the shoreline permit. We were within the 250-foot shoreline zone, we received that permit. We do need permits or approval from the Water and Sewer District. We will obviously need final approval from Mike Bignelli, and we will also need a permit from DOT because we will be excavating in Route 3 for the new water line, so we need an excavation permit from DOT.
Thank you.
I just, I have a question, a setup question for Jay.
Uh-oh.
No, no, it's okay. You don't need a driveway permit because you will have no driveway.
That's correct.
Yep. And the entrance is going on to, being shifted around the side of the building to 175, side correct? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, because, because of the time of year it is and everything, I mean, you're getting the same scrutiny everybody else does, but of course, there is the pending doom of winter coming regarding the construction season, so, and you've shifted the side a little bit. We haven't, we've, we've been in close contact with each other. We don't have a full set of engineering plans yet, but our engineer is very much aware of that, and I just, you know, by full disclosure, I want the board to know that at this point. So again, as with other cases previously, if you felt that you needed to deliberate later on, perhaps right after the ZBA meeting, in that interim, I'm assuming that we'll be getting the full engineering plans and Mike Bignelli will be reviewing them, and then, you know, writing, signage, landscaping, all that kind of stuff will be included at that point.
And we can talk about some of those things tonight if you'd like to.
Right, but there's no, there's no bona fide paper on it right now, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew, you know, this is going to get the full, the full bracket look over, so.
So the board, the task right now, we've got a lot of information, is to decide whether the application is complete and whether we can accept it tonight. Any comments on that before?
No, you do have a request for waivers, so you can accept it temporarily, or not temporally, conditionally, and then look at the waiver sheet and then see if there's some negotiation on the waivers. The waiver letter, you have your checklist in the application, and I think perhaps some of these, rather than a waiver, might have been not applicable, but these, these folks were very honest about it. Here's your waiver letter. It's in your packet, in the application packet. It's right after the checklist, I believe, ends. There you go. So that speaks to itemized waiver requests, and I'm sure these folks can address it if you need any further explanation.
So I'm wondering whether we need to go through this letter now before acceptance, or are we gonna-
Is that up to you?
I have a couple of questions before we-
Sure.
Now, I have a couple of questions. First off, there's no loading dock being proposed in the building, right?
There is none.
Okay. And what do you plan to do about parking? There is none, I know.
It is a lot that does not have parking attached to it. Like any Village Center, I mean, particularly a college center, whether it be Hanover here, I live in Ashland, we even have parking issues there. It's just going to exist. But we have been taking some positive steps of working on the parking issue that, for our tenants that'll be coming in there. Just to note that PSU staff that'll be working in the building will already have their own parking on campus. That is something PSU is taking care of. We are looking and talking with the town on leasing lots from them. Currently, the GCEDC leases lots, we're right about Meredith Village Savings Downtown, and we've successfully leased two lots from the town. It's my understanding there's as many as 30 leasable lots that the town has on there. Those discussions are ongoing. And when DOT Commissioner Chris Clement does come to review some of the problems associated with the street runoff factor in front of our building, we'll also be taking him onto the wilderness side of the river and looking at some DOT-owned properties adjacent to the bridge for perhaps some permeable parking opportunities over there.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I'm sorry.
I just have a question. I'm just curious as to know how this type of organization gets funded for, for being run. Is it by grant? Is Plymouth State College putting some in? When somebody wants help out, do they get charged for the services? I mean, how does this all-
Well, I can tell you that it's been about a two-year effort to raise the funds for the construction side of things, and we've had what I would consider an excellent response by federal and state funders. We were not turned down for any of the grants we applied for, and there were approximately five, many of which leveraged one another, and it was, it was pretty complicated. But the idea behind a business incubator is you don't want to be bogged down with debt, because the residuals of any of the lease that is produced within an incubator, after the operations are completed and after other expenses associated with the real estate, the property taxes and other things are paid for, the residuals of that then go toward the programming, the staffing, and the other services that will be provided to the tenants within it. We want to get to the point where it is self-sufficient, but right now, I can tell you, the Plymouth State University has stepped up to the plate using a group of internal sources to get it started as well. So this is not a moneymaker, if you will, for the GCEDC. Most of the revenues that are captured will be used for the programming to actually help the tenants that are within it and also off-site clients.
Yes, Mr. Wilson.
I'd make a motion to accept this for a public hearing with the understanding that the full review of the waivers will come as additional information filters in.
Beautiful. Is there a second?
A second.
Can we discuss it before we vote on whether to accept this application? Okay. All of those in favor of accepting the application as-
Complete conditions.
Complete conditions, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. Okay. I'll settle the information, so that's, so that moves us to the next phase, and we can now, is there, before we move to public hearing, is there any other comments or questions from the board before we listen to the panel?
I guess architectural question. The drawing that's on that board doesn't appear to match up with the drawing that was on the table tonight. That's sort of a full three stories, this one's kind of a-
Two-story.
Partial three?
Yes, the drawing you have is really for informational purposes and not the drawing that you put in your application papers. So, yes, it is a slight modification of that.
Okay. So it's a full three-story?
Yes.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify, Sharon, could you clarify just on the point of parking, how the argument stands on that, on the Village Center district?
It's not required, you're not required to provide any, I mean, if you don't, you'll be in serious trouble with your clients, but-
Yes, we would, Sharon.
There's no parking requirement for site management, and that's all.
So at this point, we're going to move to public hearing. I will open it up in a minute and allow public comment. The time now is 7:20, I'll open it up. What I will do is ask for those that would like to speak in favor of the applicant to stand up, state your name, and say what you'd like. Anybody wishing to speak- your name, and say what you'd like. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Yes, Mr. Gosny.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Ray Gosny. Just to add on to the information that is already provided to Ms. Fisher, I think it's important for you to also understand that the Grafton County Economic Development Council facility is proposed here. Even though that organization is a nonprofit organization, they have agreed to pay property taxes to the town, have already been paying property taxes on the existing facility, and will of course be paying the increased property taxes that this new facility will bring to the town in terms of additional revenue.
Yes.
Frank Miller, and I stand in support of the construction of this new center. At first, I think it's going to be a great way to start off our next century of life and business in Plymouth, because our next, 2015 is our 250th celebration, and I think we need to move forward with the business and connect our youth to future of the business. And I know it's going to be disruptive, as there is in any construction. The level of work we've had down on Main Street over the last 30 years, Main Street, but I believe once the dust settles, this building will fit in, and I believe the building will serve the town and the people very well, standing supportive.
Any other comments in support? Okay. Are there any comments in opposition to the application? Any comments of general nature, then? Yes.
I'm Jerry Laurie. My brother and David, and I are buddies, and I'd like to know how long the construction is perceived to be from teardown to completion.
At this point, Ron, I just want to, Jerry Kingwell, he is our instruction manager for this project. Good evening, and thank you for having us. We anticipated it would be no longer than an eight-month project, so it was from the date that we get approval. I anticipated an eight-month process, and anticipation, assuming that approval is granted shortly, somewhere in the vicinity of mid-July, it'll be completed in its entirety.
Any other comments of the general nature? Yes.
My name is David Laurie. Is all the construction going to be done during daylight working hours or in the evening work from the project?
It is, I intend to work through a standard workout timeframe unless there's some special needs required for the sole purposes of working within the neighborhood and with the community to better the process so that it doesn't impact other folks, but who knows what during standard workouts.
Any other comments during this public hearing time? This is your chance. Okay. Seeing no more public comments, and I don't know if there's a need for the applicant to rebut anything that was said. Everything seems to be okay. I will close the public hearing at 7:25 and bring this application back to the board for comments or questions. Yes, Ms. Fisher.
I'm kind of like confused here, because what has been presented to us, what was given to us, then what was received on our desk today was this, and then what's presented to us is this this evening.
That's, I'm sorry, excuse me. That was older.
This was on, this was on desk.
It's the first opportunity to give it to you, so I'll go with that. That's just coloration, maybe general design flavor.
If something's anything different, and that looks totally different. The other thing that I'm trying to figure out, too, is the building is supposed to be smaller than the foundation that it sits on, and I don't have like, there's no like an overlay where it shows where existing and then where it is, so I'm kind of trying to figure that out.
So, it's right here. See the double lines? Yeah, this is not in color, unfortunately.
Well, I mean, I can see, but I just, it wasn't--
You can see right in the blue, it's more clear--
Oh, yeah.
The red is the existing footprint?
Yep. Okay, because the notes, because it was said that it's going to be less space, but I'm wondering, on the other side, you said that that's going to be like more of like a driveway kind of thing, not a driveway, but is that going to be paved between the buildings?
Yes, that will stay largely as it is right now.
And that's paved?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the alleyway. And that, George, do you want to just show them where the block was, this period, and then show these--
Yes, this is a solar block addition of our building at some point in town, which actually sits only a few, four feet away from the neighboring building. Our new building will actually give us close to 10 feet of separation. And this was the parcel it's talking about actually is in complete non-comformance over the plot, and we'll bring it back in.
Could you show this?
So, the white line is the--
I just didn't know how it was going to really be added more.
The white line is our new building. This is the driveway that largely stays as it is right now. You can see the proximity of the neighboring building right now.
That's what I was questioning. Right.
That's on the north side.
And I'm assuming this is going to be gravel.
That's on the north side.
Assuming, right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Now, excuse me, I was just going to be saying that when I get that stuff from these folks in the interim, the full set of plans, the schematics that show it more clearly, I'll get it right out to you. Sorry, John Kelly.
How many tenants are going to be involved with this building?
The question was how many tenants.
Student, so whatever you want, you might want to call them.
Yeah, it will vary. I mean, I can tell you that our business incubator in Lebanon with Dartmouth College, at one time, we had one business taking out half the space that was available to lease, and they finally had to move out because they were growing so fast. It could be a group of people that want nothing more, if they're software developers, than a 10-by-10 office. We may have some space that we will want to have merely cubicles, and these businesses will just lease out a cubicle. We may even find some businesses just want cubicles on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and a totally different business will want the same cubicle on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So, it is going to vary dramatically depending on the type of business going in there. I can tell you that we are looking, at least with some of the businesses that are on there, that they will be, have greater opportunities for growth and employment. At some point, they're going to have to move out of the, out of the business if, for the building, if they want to continue growing.
Okay.
So, it could be as few as, I'll just say, five. It could be as many as perhaps 20.
That sort of leads me into a question. If fire safety is concerned, if you decide to rent out the parking lot across 175, there's going to be quite a bit of traffic, including the students moving back and forth, aren't there?
Yeah, it's, I have noticed, and I'll give kudos to the town of Plymouth and perhaps Holdenus, but I got to tell you, that is one bridge that I see plowed frequently. By the way, I really like the way the snowmobile section is on there. I think that's pro-business for you folks with that crowd. But there is a lot of traffic already, foot traffic on that business. We'll be taking any steps we can to mitigate any of the issues of people perhaps crossing the street or others.
I know personally that when you're coming in from 175, and you try to watch the traffic coming from Camden, which sometimes stops, but not very often going into that, now you're going to just increase the, your vision problem of watching students, whoever's coming from your left, and also looking for cars and pedestrians coming in from your right. It's, I would think it couldn't amount to a rather tricky situation.
One thing we probably want to do is work with the town on some traffic calming measures in and around that area. I know on the Holdenus side, DOT has put up some flashing lights around some of the crosswalks there. Perhaps we can work with them, as well as Plymouth State University and others, on developing others that will, for some, for some sightline issues related to pedestrian traffic through there. We'd be happy to work with you folks on that.
One last thing is, have you ever thought of one of the pedestrian traffic lights that should walk and don't walk?
No, we haven't had discussions, but I will bring that up with Commissioner Chris Clement from DOT when he comes up and visits. And Sharon, maybe that's something I can share, that date and time when he's going to be there, and we can have your, you have a, a street commissioner, road commissioner?
Little works.
Okay. Maybe we can have him involved in those discussions as well. We certainly don't want to have any problems with pedestrians there, and that's, that can be apparent based on the sightline issue that, that we've maintained on that tricky corner that's there.
Last question is, or statement, maybe. I think it's a good time for the town to at least correct the situation of the flooding and make sure that's going to be done prior to the building and building, because things like that seem to be sort of pushed in the background and never thought about again. So, if we could get that all straightened out and so that the businesses there don't get flooded out, then I think this is a time to try to do that.
Indeed, that's why we're hoping the DOT Commissioner Chris Clement will address these things. It had been a long time coming, much to the chagrin of our northern abutters who have been flooded out frequently on that--
Regularly.
It was just something that wasn't addressed, and we're taking a lot of the goodwill that DOT has toward this project, as well as other federal and state officers, to help address that and maybe work with the town on, on getting that done and over with.
Do you have any, excuse me, do you have any idea when that might be marked? I mean, before the end of this year?
Absolutely. It's early November that he will be here, and I'll share that date with you. If you could spread that around, and I think the more people there addressing this issue, including our neighbors, the better.
Ms. Fisher, do you have a comment or a question?
It had to do with John Kelly, but I think he covered it. I think the, my thought was that the fire department would probably have a max amount of how many people can be in that building for fire safety purposes. I would think that that would be addressed.
Absolutely, yeah. We will be very cognizant--
That they would cap that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And we have had initial discussions with those folks, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Just one question. Is it fair to assume that there will be no manufacturing in this building?
That is the case. That is the case.
Yes, Mr. Och?
I'm still concerned about deliveries. I know you're not going to have manufacturing, but businesses still want to have deliveries, and right where that tricky corner is, as you say, you know, where are trucks going to go? Right now, when the Flying Monkey has concerts, their vans park in front of the Flying Monkey because there's no delivery to the back of that place, and the road is a disaster down there for trying to drive through it, and I see potential happen the same with, with your building.
You notice that we do have a curb cut that is there, and we have, at the behest of our neighbors, maintained almost all of the existing alleyway.
Right.
I know that our neighbors do use that alleyway frequently, and they had concerns about, maybe we wanted to have that, a larger extension of the, of the retaining wall path that, cars could go in or vehicles.
Right.
As it happens, we feel that we're, we can also use that alleyway as well for our own delivery purposes as well.
10 feet wide, though?
Actually, do you have the, it's more than 10 feet wide. It was--
Around 12.
We went over it with our neighbors with a tape. We felt confident that, I mean, you're not going to get an 18-wheeler down in there, but you can get a larger--
No, no.
How big are the vehicles that you have in there, folks?
60-foot cube and a ton.
How about the size of a FedEx or a UPS truck?
Yeah, UPS truck. So, you're trying to utilize the alley--
Exactly.
Not to block the road.
Exactly.
Because it's, it winds up being, Route 3 winds up being fairly narrow through downtown Plymouth, and it's blocked quite often when I drive through.
It's part of the charm and the challenges.
Yeah. Well, we want to add to the challenge. We have existing challenge, we want to add to it. That's my concern. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. Would there be any living units in the building?
There will not be.
Overnight, no.
Okay.
And the road width, as Mr. Och just mentioned, I mean, I'm not sure, what kind of discussions did you have with, with DOT concerning future widening of that road? Or, I mean, it's, there's a lot of use there, and it is, I think, the most narrow part of Main Street that we have is right there.
Between, we're on Main Street between like Draper Manor and this building?
Yes, yeah.
Well, there is, I, you know, I hate to mention it, but of course, if DOT is, and I, although I doubt that they'd be looking at expanding that at any point, you know, there is parking on the Draper Manor side. You'd hate to take away parking from any part of Main Street, but I don't think that they're going to come to us and take us and our neighbors' property by eminent domain, for instance, to expand a roadway. I think that would be pretty foolish, and it'd be unfortunate for the town to take down any building on Main Street. I mean, these are the, Main Street buildings are part of a town's culture and part of its soul, and that's why I mentioned if you just took down buildings that were problematic in the downtown area and made parking out of them, you've kind of defeated the purpose of why you want parking to begin with. And I know that there are a lot of communities that would love to have the challenge of parking in the downtown area, but I, I think, other than just taking the buildings themselves, there's not a lot they can do to expand that area beyond what it is, Mike.
All right, Jonathan, just to add, I mean, the DOT sold the building to GCEDC, and before they actually executed the deed, they declared that we're all of the department heads that stayed in Hampshire, and they also offered the building for the sale to the town in place. So, in my opinion, it would be highly unlikely that they would do something in the, in the future, given that they didn't want the asset being in the world.
Just, that's a good question. I mean, particularly that corner area.
Yeah, it's so narrow there. The building's not up yet. It's going to be up, and it just seems to think, you would think before you construct a new building about the width of the road. I'm not aware of any accidents that have happened because of the width of the road, so maybe it's not a problem, and I'm making a problem out of nothing, but--
Well, our first issue was under the existing building before, before it got hit by the truck, there was only, what do you think, a four-foot wide distance of--
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk between rolling traffic in the building.
Yeah, it was very close.
And that's been addressed with, with this, but I was actually quite surprised. DOT was the one to actually make that bevel. You notice that after the accident, they took down, they wanted to main, the site issue was of concern to them, but also it was getting, it got hit. So, DOT actually used their own funds, and they did that before we bought it, actually, to maintain that sightline. So, we have maintained that.
I just want to make an editorial comment on that. You know, you can engineer and engineer and engineer, but a lot of the responsibility with safety and traffic safety is the driver. And I love that roundabout. It's great, but I get a little irritated with people thinking that, you know, it's Speedway at the races and beating each other out, and that's why the sign that says yield is there. So, perhaps if people could learn to drive a little better, you know, that will leave the, I'm serious. You know, it's not hurry up and speed through because it'll take three extra seconds if you don't, so.
Mr. Kelly?
I believe the traffic circle in West Plymouth, the people, and I might be completely reversed to this, but the people coming onto the traffic circle has the right.
Yep.
And the other one, the roundabout, the, the traffic in the circle has the right.
Right, it's opposite.
So, I think probably that might create just a wee bit of confusion, not the people that, that, you know, people coming from Massachusetts and stuff like that, they really don't know whether to stop or shift. So, I think probably it's more the territorial problem than it is the person's problem, because-- because it's hard to remember if you're coming from Romney that you're okay coming in, but down there, you're not okay coming in.
That's why you have to read the signs and not do the drag racing.
But when you see students coming across and another guy coming in from Campton and trying to read those signs at the same time, it, it becomes a real problem on that, especially if you're not used to this.
No, you're right. But I mean, that, that is, roundabouts are traffic calming devices by their very nature, but theoretically, they're supposed to slow down. All right, off the south box.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, folks. Thank you.
So we've got some decisions to make, but we want to do, whether we want to continue this for another meeting where we can get more information, or do we have enough information to get approval tonight? Yes, Mr. Kelly?
I don't really think that we've got the total amount of information. I'd like to at least find out about the water problems and have that written down in black and white instead of just maybe if we thought of it, we might be able to fix it. We've kind of have all of, all of our novels in line before we approve this because once we approve it, that's the end of the conversation as far as we're concerned. And what we don't ask for is probably more important than what we ask for because I'm sure that whoever is doing this, most of the time won't volunteer if there was something wrong with a certain segment of the project. I just, I just want to make sure the town Plymouth is well protected and we don't have some legal aspect six months or a year down the road.
You?
Yes.
The purpose of this discussion here on this issue, is this to approve the application?
Yes.
We should go forward with it and approve it with the conditions, John. We always need conditions and we can revise or change or whatever, but to slow everything down in the process for timing and other things, we're talking about proving the application and that seems, appears to be in order. Is that correct with the town?
Well, just.
The conditions?
FYI, well FYI, there will be an approval from the zoning board needed. So that would, when you get to the conditions part of the site plan approval, you will need to note that that meeting has been slated for October 30th. One option you have, we have established this as legal when we were challenged on some other applications, you have a work session coming up on November 1st, which is the two days after the ZBA meets to approve the necessary special exception and variance. So you could, for one option, since you've had your public hearing tonight and closed it, orally continue this meeting to a date certain, which would be Thursday, November 1st, which is not that far away. It's 12 days. And then in the interim, it gives, the charge would be that it gives these folks time to finish the engineering plans, get them to our engineer, give me some site plan reductions to get to you folks, you know, the smaller sets or whatever you need and, and the missing pieces, so to speak. You would have, and then you'd have an opportunity to deliberate on November 1st on this.
Yes, Mr. Kelly?
I, I, I have a problem because when Rose was coming in, we never moved an inch for three years. We came up with all kinds of different requests and, and everything and we did not let them move without, and we didn't approve it with conditions. Now, this is a sub lot, subsized lot. It's on a busy corner. It's on a lot of, a lot of problems with this particular project. And we seem to say, the gates are wide, wide open, we'll let it flow and sometime down the line, if they want to, they'll take care of all of these conditions.
Well, John, just, there's, there are some issues, but there's no parking required. They're not going to have a driveway entrance, a new one or anything like that, so that's off the table in terms of safety. And any of the drainage, these folks are not liable, they're not creating any more impervious surface, correct?
Never.
So with a smaller footprint, so any of the drainage issues in the neighborhood are preexisting in the neighborhood. And, and by working on this project, the, the questions have been, not the questions, but the interest has been raised to get the DOT Commissioner up here to look at the entire street because it needs to be looked at aside from this.
Okay, when you're talking about safety, I understand there's no parking and I probably wouldn't be as concerned about the safety part of it if they had parking on the actual track. But as far as safety is concerned, people are going to probably be moving back and forth from that parking lot to the building. And I would like to have, have that settled somewhere along the way. So we can all, always sidestep this stuff, but when you talk about safety, I think there's going to be more safety issues by having parking across a busy intersection than you would if you had it packed right there at the building.
I, I think that it puts the applicant in a really difficult position to have to try and come up with parking on that small spot.
I don't think you can.
And that's not required, so.
And as far as from KV Partners, their concerns were all runoff issues. And that was the bulk of, of their concerns.
Well, I, I actually asked Mike Vignali in the absence of redress by DOT on this because he has actually looked at this to give preliminary information for you folks tonight so you have something to work with, not just an absence of information. But he will be looking at that again.
So he's done this based on what plans?
Based on his inherent.
Knowledge of the site.
And he went and did a site walk, he himself.
Based on.
And conversations with, yeah.
From, from the conceptual plans and a little bit of the, the site plan?
Yes.
Now.
But that's not an engineering review.
Correct.
That's just a bit of something from.
And when he has the full plans.
Correct, correct.
From the applicant, he can then make some decisions about recommendations.
Right. I, I think John Kelly, though, is speaking to pedestrian safety.
Basically, that was one of my concerns.
Mr. Lewis?
Ed, what's your schedule for getting the full set of plans to Sharon and Mike Vignali?
Mike Vignali would have the full civil details prior to the 30th and we would look to have the full construction set available to Brian Murphy for building, I'm sure thereafter provided approval is made.
I usually get what Mike gets.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Kelly?
The, one other problem I might have is that we used to always have to go up to the site and maybe watch the, the traffic and so forth, but we here we sit in the second story of the town building, trying to make a decision on something that is probably got more problems than, than, than we would care to think about. I think what we ought to do is have a site, site view.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Should we also consider, after the Commissioner, the DOT Commissioner looks at the drainage issue before we decide? Is that a viable point?
From what I understand.
It's early November, right?
That will be quick enough. Well, it, it'll be several weeks.
Oh, okay.
As I understand it.
From what I took from that discussion, it sounds like a lot of what DOT, their recommendations isn't going to affect the actual building. It's more of off-site.
Right, that's true.
So it should not affect what they're planning.
Right.
And anything that KV Partners, I'm just guessing here and I'm just throwing it out to you, anything that KV Partners would suggest, I don't think is going to affect the building. I think it may, a larger drain here or there or something. It's not like a site where we've done a large subdivision in front of us where, where the engineer and our town engineer is going to say, that's not going to work, there's too many units or laps and major changes. We're talking about a building that's downtown, that's, there's a building already there, they're going to make some improvements, it's going to be a net reduction as far as impervious soils? Or are we talking?
Impervious surface.
Impervious surface. There's going to be a net reduction.
It should actually enhance surface drainage.
Is there anything that you're doing, maybe I missed this, anything that you're doing that could handle a storm runoff more than what's there now? Or that is not part of it at this point? Okay. That's something, I mean.
That's more DOT because they're not creating any more theoretical, of their own volition. I mean, if a sluice of water comes down High Street because of a big storm, it's not because of the site development. But that may come later on.
Mr. Kelly?
One thing that you said, I'm a little confused about, I had always assumed that an improvement might be, new windows maybe or something. I didn't think that was the concept that they had in mind when they said that they were going to level a lot to the foundation and building and building. That is not an improvement in my mind.
At the point of pedestrian safety, so the existing building is a restaurant facility and with that, the occupant load of the building would be very compatible to what we're suggesting because under that, you can go to five square feet per person. Under office building, we're up at 15 to 30 square feet per person. So we haven't analyzed what the actual capacity of the existing building is, but it may actually be very close to a wash in terms of the actual potential occupancy of the building, which would be, in effect, the same scenario you have right now versus the new building isn't actually increasing the pedestrian load that could go to that site.
Can I hear this?
Yes.
That building is not a restaurant building. That building is a vacant building and anybody that ever tried it, rested, they lasted for about three weeks and not been.
But he needed approval.
But it's approved for that, so it's.
That is true, but it's been vacant for how long?
But is the failure of the building related to pedestrian safety or just?
No, how long has the building been vacant?
Two years.
Two years.
So, you know, even though it's permitted, something it's permitted to do, it hasn't been that way since, almost since that roundabout has been that way. So I, I really don't understand that, on Main Street, I think almost anything is, is permitted as far as commercial business is concerned, you know? But the fact is that you're now going to turn a, completely destroy the building and build a new three-story building there. And we'd like to get the schematic sort of straightened out more than, than you.
On that, it is, it's not in current operation as a restaurant, but it's perfectly conceivable someone could apply and reopen that as a restaurant without site plan review, correct?
Yeah, if it, if it's.
Which arguably would have a same occupant load that our proposed building would have. So again, the increased pedestrian safety, or increased pedestrian load isn't necessarily an increase compared to what could actually be on the site right now anyway.
I think part of what the planning board's job is, is to do what we can in favor of the town. Get something on that site that's productive and be very much. Building the town, if I haven't having an eyesore with the building, it probably has, probably some issues with the structural condition of it now possibly. And we're talking about a new building, chances of finding someone in the private sector, although I guess it's some quasi-private. But I.
I'm certainly not against the building or, or new business coming to Plymouth. I just want all the, all the novels in line before we have to have, which we have done quite a few times, the town of Plymouth has found out that we've had to either go to a support, we had to have a lot of legal action afterward and I don't want that.
Yes.
May I? It may not have shown up very clearly, just because the viewport was cut off, but there are two adequate pedestrian crosswalks. This is just an existing feature span north in this direction. There is an existing crosswalk basically right at the front door of the facility that cuts across over here to a brick paver patio, paver area. And there's also one right here. And these were newly constructed as part of the roundabout. And so these are new standard pedestrian crosswalks. So there is, there is existing new paths. They have the tactile plates, the everything is there and what it would be if you were to construct one, this is what's there. One point I did want to make is the whole point of a roundabout is to eliminate lights. The whole point of a roundabout is to keep traffic flowing, albeit slow, but keep it safe. So putting pedestrian lights that actually stop the traffic there would go against the actual intent of the roundabout. So it's unlikely that DOT is going to entertain a pedestrian crosslight which is going to stop traffic here.
It was.
And that's the whole, it defeats the purpose. So as far as pedestrians, and I, and I'm a, I'm a civil side engineer, this, this is fairly well suited for pedestrian traffic as it exists now. The other thing about, excuse me, one more thing, Mike, the other thing, it is tight, but generally the designs of roundabouts, they do make the lanes narrower and that's a traffic calming measure. It forces people to go slower. If this was 20 feet wide, people would be going 60 around it versus 20. So the idea is tighten the lanes up and keep the traffic flowing.
That will no longer be true as far as your front door is concerned by being, facing the Main Street.
Our front door is this way, so it's just on the other end. It's just outside.
What you were just saying is that, that that crosswalk would go into, across Main Street would go into the front door of the building. That's the way it is now. Now it's not. It's going to be on Route 175.
That's right, and there's a, there's a crosswalk right here.
And, and the second thing is I'm sure that everybody would really appreciate it if they had to stop at a light instead of a body when they're going over the traffic or the, or the roundabout. Something's got to stop if you've got a body in the middle of that road. I really don't care whether it's a light or a human body, but I assume that everybody would appreciate the light more than they would the human body. No, is that, somebody, no matter what, if somebody's in the middle of that road and somebody's coming up that road, they are going to stop, right?
It's a personal response.
So, you know, I just don't want it to be a human body. I want to have some way to control it so when somebody starts across that road.
It's the schedule.
And I've seen a lot of people try to make that last 10 feet going about 40 miles an hour into that roundabout.
John, I'm going to let Mr. Wilson talk and then I've got a question that I've got that will relate to what you're asking.
Mr. Wilson? Yeah, there are yield signs on, on all four entrances to the roundabout and it seems to me that if people are not respecting the yield signs, that that's an enforcement issue.
Need to get arrested.
Also, on Mr. Kelly's point, Mr. Wilson, what type of schedule are we looking at? Are we looking where it could be on the hour, we have 15 people coming out of there and then 15 people going in? Or is it, I mean, is there any way to kind of guesstimate?
I'll tell you if it's.
What traffic might be?
I'll tell you, if it's anything like our incubator over at Dartmouth, we'll see a lot of late night lights going on in that building from people starting and maintaining their businesses until some, well, some, some late hours. I mean, that's just what they do. I can tell you that there's a large, lot of people already walking in that area, students. And what, I mentioned 20 businesses. Maybe it's 20 businesses, so that would be 20 people. Is, I would suspect that that is probably a smaller fraction of the number of students that regularly walk that, those paths and those well-maintained sidewalks than, than that. So we appreciate your concerns on that, Mr. Kelly. I mean, it's just something that we'll have to caution our folks on as a matter of our operations and their orientation to the building. We do hope, however, that we do not get caught up with our approval. We do hope, however, that we do not get caught up with our approval with things that are beyond our control and more of a state issue, but we certainly want concurrently to work with the state on addressing those issues. I mean, as our neighbors have understood, they've already shelled out some of their own money for damage from water. We do not want to be in the same position. So you can be guaranteed that we're going to be working with DOT on that. I am hoping, however, that with certain conditions, we can start moving forward on this project. We do have staff that has been working diligently on this. I will tell you that our federal grant sources require a contract to be signed and approvals, and we can't start paying these people until our grant funders are satisfied that this is going forward. We had hoped tonight that we could have approval with those conditions that you folks have worked on before and that I think Sharon has outlined some of those today.
I guess I have a couple of comments. They're still going to need zoning board approval.
Absolutely.
They still will need the DOT to come in and approve...
Is the excavation permit or will we get an excavation permit?
Right, excavation permit.
Yeah, but not a driveway or anything.
And as far as what our town engineer might recommend, I would think, or if we made something conditional upon that, that if they want to get their approval, that they would have to be contingent upon Mike Bignalli's recommendations.
We're going to ask the zoning board, waiting them first, don't...
That's what, to this board, yes, Mr. Kelly.
When you said approval, that sort of confused me just a second ago. What type of approval? Because if we approve that now, then what other approvals?
They would need a height variance, which they would have to meet five criteria to get a variance.
Now, is this one of the conditions?
Yeah, your zoning board approval on both special exception variance would have to be a rock-solid condition of any approval for site plan review. That's number one.
Do we have a list of those conditions before we approve this thing?
Which conditions? Of any others related to site plan review?
Do you have the zoning board?
No, as far as we're concerned, you said approval with conditions. What conditions are they?
That's what we're talking about now, whether we do want to approve it and if we do approve it with what conditions. Otherwise, we would continue this if need be. But I'm, we're trying to see whether it is needed to continue this to get more information.
Your continuation is twelve days, so including weekends, so it's not huge, but...
The other item on the table is that they are looking for some waivers if we do approve tonight for some site plan waivers as far as...
It's a site plan checklist.
The checklist, which would include full engineering plans, that type of thing. So it's... Yes, Mr. Wilson.
I guess my thought is that maybe we might be best to continue it to the first, is it? Yeah, November first. I mean, between now and then, Sharon could maybe draw up, you know, sort of a complete list of the conditions. Mike will have had a chance to take a look at the final plans, we go into the zoning board, and I think we could probably get this wrapped up pretty easily, quickly on the first.
So we'd be looking at less than two weeks to have them come back full-size engineers, and we would not at that point need to vote on whether we want to waive our checklist for these items.
You, you need to discuss, you accepted the application. I'm not sure whether it's implicit or not, because you folks had had a chance to look at this with the application, that you feel that it's kosher and you accept these requests for waivers. Is anything here that they're asking not to have the plans acceptable to you? Although I think some of that may show up on your plans. Your waivers. Are your preliminary, I mean, the application, you want...
Just a clarification, a lot of those points in there were asked for waivers when we were still under the impression that this was an informational hearing only. So that was why we did not actually present all that information. We would be happy to present all that information to you, but it's...
When the plans come in.
Yes, but as Mark suggests, we are actually hoping to proceed with this project and move to the next level, and your approval with conditions is a preferred option.
I agree with you, Jim. We've done this throughout the years, and we have the substance of the application with conditions. We can specify certain conditions as we do them or pre them, but there can be other conditions that will come up later that are not part of the board. It might be from DOT, it might be from environmental, it might be something else. So we can't specify exactly every condition. I agree with John, and we should have a list once we reach that point, but let them go forward to get the information they need to meet these conditions, and that costs money. So let's approve the application, that's my feeling, and not keep the way ahead.
With no exceptions right now, with no exceptions right now.
Conditions.
Conditions.
With conditions, you're saying?
I'm saying, you want to approve this tonight, you don't have a list...
The application, John, the application. Not approving the project, not approving the application.
We've already approved the application.
So you've accepted that, but what you're talking about is approving the project without a list of conditions or anything else. I don't think that probably that would be too right.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this to the August, November first meeting. I'd like to make a motion we continue to the November first meeting so the zoning board can meet and discuss their concerns.
Make a motion on the table, I have one question. When is the zoning board meeting?
October 30th. Two days later would be your next opportunity for continuation at which you would, well, continue your deliberation and vote to approve or disapprove.
So we're looking at one extra day for them to get their approval.
Correct.
But will the zoning board be able to complete their analysis or anything like that right then?
It's very, it's pretty boilerplate. I mean, I'm not, I'm not preloading the deck, but because setbacks are an issue in that part of town anyway, I mean, you know, pre step... The only reason they're having a setback problem is because they're moving the footprint. And the variance, hopefully the ZVA will go along with the height variance because we have a ladder truck that could provide rescue or fire suppression services on it. It's a fairly simple ZVA application. I mean, I can't guarantee they're going to say yes if they don't. They don't, but it's not a complex...
But we have all the equipment in place to take care of all the safety and all the legal aspects of it.
Because when we first, excuse me, when we, when we first were looking at this, when we thought it was quasi-governmental, you still have to obviously go through all the life safety requirements, so there were some preliminary discussions with Chief Clogston before.
Mr. Johnson.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. In the past, in line with Mr. Dragon, as already pointed out, when there have been needs for both zoning and planning to cooperate or coordinate in reviewing a matter that's in front of them, they have jointly held a meeting on either the Tuesday night that the zoning met or the Thursday night that planning met. I leave it to the town planner, if there's no other items in front of zoning on Tuesday night, then perhaps you might choose to meet with your November one meeting on October 30th so that you jointly meet that night on October the 30th. It's been done several times in the past when there's a need to have both organizations together simultaneously. Thank you.
We have a motion on the table to continue this till November first. We have a suggestion that possibly we could combine with zoning board. I don't know the logistics of that, how...
It's not a problem.
You don't have the public side of that?
You do.
I do, but it's a different, it's a five-day window rather than ten. Nothing's ever standard.
Mr. Kelly.
What's it going to cost for that one extra day so we could meet on a regular planning board night? Number one, because the public probably won't know that we slipped something in on them a day early, and number two, it would give the zoning board more freedom to discuss what they want and then give that to us so we can discuss what we have a problem with, or not a problem, but a...
It's just one last night meeting for me, John, that's why. But I don't care. It doesn't matter.
A second motion. I know Mr. Dragon has, would like to just get it over with, and then the applicant doesn't have to come back for another night meeting. I'm not sure how much more information that would impact the building, but obviously we've, we've got a motion on the table and we don't have a second yet.
Second.
Any discussion on what we're voting on? That would continue it to our next scheduled meeting on November first. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nay. So it's one, two, three, four.
I'm a nay.
Nay. So three nays, one, two, three, four ayes. So it is now continued to our next meeting, which will be November first. Yes.
Could the board please clarify what additional information they're looking for at that meeting?
The one thing that I want is a list of the conditions. That is my biggest concern. Right now, we have no list of any condition, and we're going to approve something that we know is, we're going to have a list of conditions. So it's sort of putting the cot before the horse. So if we do, if we have that period of time that we can bring up conditions and then wrap it all up at one time, then I...
Just a clarification, you're not looking for any additional information presented, you're merely using the time to draw up a list of conditions.
That, but I would like to, on their behalf and my, for my own edification, to get copies of the plans that you're getting to Mike Bignalli, site plan packages. So I will know more and I can, as, as an ancillary, ancillary package, give it to them so they will have more than just, you know, that one piece.
And then just for clarification, the meeting on that night will be to approve the project with those conditions?
It's deliberative, deliberative portion, yeah.
The conditions won't be to provide more information, this is the opportunity to ask for more information.
They will be ruminating on possible conditions, as will I, so...
They're going to know those conditions and tell how you know.
Which usually don't anyway, so...
We don't either.
Is it possible that the board could allude to what those conditions might be just now?
If I can, it sounds like a condition would be the engineering engineer's report, the height variance, the site setback issue, those issues before.
That's implicit.
Those are the three that I have heard, and I'm just data collecting here.
And you still will not have met with the Department of Transportation by then, is whatever.
Let me be clear, that we're meeting with them to address a state street issue.
Right, an off-site issue.
Nothing to do with our building or our site or anything that would require municipal approval.
Mr. Dragon, jabbering.
Well, the conditions, we want to be certain that in two weeks through our discussion, what if another condition or two comes up? What are we going to do then?
It'll be less than we have.
Just us.
It'll be less than what we are facing right now.
Okay, but we don't want to postpone another two weeks or the next meeting just because we've come up with another condition? Because in a discussion, that's already possible.
That's our responsibility for getting all the conditions that that...
What's that, John?
That's our responsibility to think up all the different conditions that we want and not...
But what I'm saying is if a condition comes up that we haven't thought about or through discussion with these people, for whatever reason, is this going to be a reason to postpone?
No, then we can approve it with, with those extra conditions.
Thank you.
Well, that's my thought.
Well...
So do you want to reiterate that, just for the record, continuation?
There is a continuation, the public hearing is, has gone by, there'll be no more public input. November first meeting will be to review the full engineering report based on what the engineering plan, but he does not have at this point, based on those engineering plans. The board will then deliberate and I would expect make a decision on that night.
So it's 6:30, Thursday the first.
And I think I can speak for the board that we, we are sympathetic to having you make another meeting. I would think I could speak for the board, we're trying to do diligence and, well, that was closer. See you in a couple of weeks.
I'll see you on the 30th, and we'll be chatting.
That brings us to item number five on the agenda for a spot.
Thank you. Appreciate your diligence.
I'll see you soon.
Take care. Mike, now the road line is resisting wire, he's on the board, council.
I just want to go home and be sick, that's all. Uh, yeah, there's, yep, actually, it's a very good conference, if anyone's interested, we remember, we will pay, so...
Okay, so that's it, right on the five. I'm finished on the business? Yes?
I have a question for the town planner. Knowing now that you have continued this matter to the meeting on November the first, do you still want to come prepared to do the presentation on LED lighting that night?
That's right. Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's about 20 minutes.
I don't see why not. I don't think, I mean, if you're amenable to it, I don't think that this would be a huge deliberation, because I...
Well, of course, I'm going to come to the meeting on the first anyway, so...
Right. I would say yes.
Heather, I'm finished on the business. I did want to make the board aware that we have one of the board that is going to be stepping down for some reasons, and she's been a great addition to the planning board for a number of years. How long have you served?
Don't say too long.
You started at sixteen.
So six years, and she's obviously the assistant, the vice chair of the board, and this appears to be her last meeting, and she gave a letter some time ago, but has decided to continue on for a length of time, and we really enjoyed having you sit with us on the board, and so we wish you best of luck, and if you wanted to say a couple words, you're welcome to.
You're doing some exciting stuff. Yes.
No, it's definitely been an honor and an experience and lots of knowledge gained, and I'm very honored and grateful to have met all of you, gotten some new wisdoms.
Now you can watch it on TV and yell at the TV, because why would I say that?
So we were probably need to have on the agenda for the first, filling the position of vice chair.
Yes, yes, and the board has been, I can't, I'm sorry, I am ill, so I really can't talk. The letter has been presented to the select board, so they're aware of it in terms of, hopefully, appointing someone else.
To serve on the planning board?
Yes, to keep our ranks.
And then the board would then have an election?
Right. No, the board's elected and would appoint.
Oh, they would appoint?
Because it's an appointed position, yeah. So, oh, no, not the vice chair, just another, another person.
Must be full-time, that's... Must be full, I guess.
All right, so item number seven, public comments.
Comments on what? Anything you'd like.
All right, seeing none, that brings us to item number eight.
Motion, Lee.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Wilson. All those in favor, sit by seven, by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, great, 8:20. All those people here, 8:20, is that all right?
Oh, I'm sure...